Good evening. Thank you for being here. Welcome to the public hearing on the Otterville County Propose of Division Control Ordinance. The ordinance subdivision control ordinance is not new to Otterville County or to any county. I believe the first subdivision. The first Otterville County subdivision control ordinance dates back to nineteen sixty-nine. Again, thank you for being here. Initially tonight, I will be calling on Otterville County Land and Resource Director Chris Leclaire. Will be providing a presentation of the proposed changes for the shoreline ordinance. But before we do that, I have some introductions that we need to make. And first, I will turn to Commissioner Rogers on my far right, and it will make our way around the table for purposes of introductions.
Good evening. I am Lee Rogers. I am the County Commissioner for District Five, which comprises basically the city of Burgess Falls, Los Acapulco, Precincts on the east side. And again, welcome.
I am Dan Morcos. I am District One, where they are in the primary and their heat colleges.
I am Bert Mortensen. I am the Commissioner for District Three, and I also happen to be the Chair of the Otterville County Board this year.
Good evening, and thanks for coming on tonight. We, Dan, I am County Commissioner from District Two, basing up comprises everything from Burgess Falls, north and west, where we sit here today.
I'm in District Four, southeast corner of the county.
Amy Busco, manager, office manager, land resource management.
Chris Leclaire. Chris Leclaire, Land and Resource Director.
Also seated behind is Assistant Director Kyle Westergaard of the Land and Resource Management Office. Also here tonight is Nick Leonard, Deputy Administrator, Otterville County. And then the far back is County Engineer Kristen Bossler, she wagered, and then also auditor Trevor Wayne Stein, one of the college. Lynn, where is she? Lynn, sorry. And Lynn Larson, Otterville County Recorder. Thank you. Thank you for pointing that out. I will be calling soon on Chris Leclaire for a presentation of the proposed changes for subdivision control ordinance. After that, there will be an opportunity for members of the public to make comment to the Otterville County Board. At that time, I will go through the guidelines, and we have a whole group here tonight, so we're gonna have to closely watch those guidelines. But it'll be an opportunity for the public to offer comment to the proposed ordinance. And we welcome those comments. But at this time, I will call on Director Chris Leclaire for his representation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, my name is Chris Leclaire. I'm the Director of Land and Resource Management. I'm here to discuss the proposed changes of our subdivision control ordinance. Just the history of subdivision control ordinance was first adopted on April ninth, nineteen sixty-nine. It had a very slight revision in nineteen eighty-one. It was revised again on August twenty-third, nineteen eighty-three. And it was the last time it was revised was May first of nineteen ninety-seven. Now, we did do a minor update back on August seventeenth, twenty twenty-one. We literally changed one word of the document. And we did that to align meet and bounds subdivisions with the shoreline management ordinance ordinance that had been revised previously or earlier that summer. Shoreland meet and bounds parcels were required to be five acres. With the shoreline ordinance revision in twenty twenty-one, we dropped that down to twenty-five acres. So we needed to make sure that the subdivision ordinance ordinance was not in conflict with that ordinance. So we literally changed one word of the ordinance. So for all intents and purposes, the last time this ordinance was revised was twenty-seven years ago. So again, time for revision. So some timeline on this for this. I've been working on this for nearly four years. This started in the fall of twenty twenty when we were all, and we were in the middle of a pandemic. We did a quality improvement project with the county reporter in this room where I was invited to participate. And in that meeting, one of the results of that quality improvement project was a request from the county reporter to have land and resource update the subdivision ordinance to formalize the approval process for lot splits. We made the decision very early on that since the current ordinance we were operating under was, at that time, twenty-four years old. And it was clunky. It was difficult to read. We decided, just like we did with sanitation code twenty nineteen and the shoreline management ordinance in twenty twenty-one, we just scrapped it and started over with a clean slate. I read a number of different counties' subdivision ordinances, and we chose Douglas County, our neighbor to the south, as the template. We used their ordinance as a starting point. So between the fall of twenty twenty and the spring of twenty twenty-two, and this wasn't all that I worked on, but in my spare time, I started writing the ordinance. And again, basically copying what Douglas County had. And then the winter, winter and spring of twenty twenty-three, just last year, myself, Amy Busco, and Kyle Westgar, we started going through line by line, section by section. Because I had written the ordinance, but I wanted to make sure my team, I wanted their input. And we went through an extensive review of what we wrote. We made a lot of changes based on the input of my staff. And then in June, June of twenty twenty-three, just about a year ago, I provided a copy to all the local surveyors that we worked with. It was all five or six different surveyors that had been working in our county. I gave them all a copy, asked for their input, and then we had a meeting. I met with the surveyors either one-on-one, or we did have a meeting with three or four of them in this building about a month ago, and got a lot of really good input from the surveyors, made a lot of changes based on that input. So we did get stakeholder input. And then this winter, on February ninth of this winter, we started doing that same exhaustive process with the county board. And we spent every county board meeting, just like we did with the shoreline ordinance three years ago, going line by line, section by section, paragraph by paragraph, to review what it is we're proposing. And again, got a lot of great feedback, a lot of good conversations from everyone on board, made a lot of changes out of those conversations. So I do this often when we talk to our ordinance. I want to talk about our current state, where we are today. So we have a meet and bound, a five-acre meet and bounds requirement. The only thing that gets platted are major plats. We require soil testing for meet and bounds parcels. We have a deadline for major plat application, final title opinion, application that are required, and a road inspection. So now I'm going to begin, this is where we are today, when I'm going to begin into our each one of these, and where we are today and where we're going with this ordinance. Our current ordinance does not have an exemption for size. You could split a forty-acre parcel, and you'd be bound by this ordinance. The current, the proposed ordinance that we have is proposing that any lot split that is ten acres or greater is exempted from the ordinance. So if you have a twenty-acre tract that you want to split into two, you can do that and not be bound by this ordinance. So this ordinance is, you are exempt from this ordinance if the split is ten acres or greater. So looking at this graph, above the line is more restrictive, below the line is less restrictive than current. We don't have a size exemption in the ordinance, so I've added this dot. I would consider this less restrictive than the current ordinance. Meet and bounds subdivision. Our current ordinance requires that a meet and bounds subdivision, a lot that contains the wetland must be a minimum of five acres in size. All other lots must be a minimum of two and a half acres. Now, I wanted to tell a quick story. About a year ago, I had a couple coming in the C D. They have six acres on Mary Lake, just south of the farm. And they wanted to split that six-acre tract into two tracks, two three acres to one child get three acres to another child. Sound like a great idea. They had the area to do it. They had the waterfront to do it. But then we noticed in the upper northwest corner of the property, there was a little bit of wetland. We actually did this after our wetland inspector out there to verify if there was in fact a wetland out there. He did determine it was wetland. Unfortunately, because of this requirement in the ordinance, they weren't able to do it. And I felt terrible. I proposed that we change that section of the ordinance to require two and a half acres across the board, whether there's wetlands or not. So as long as it's a available lot, which means you have eighty-four hundred square feet of available area, and enough area for a septic system, two and a half acres is big enough. This is the big change. The five-acre with wetlands requirement has been a standard of Otterville County since nineteen eighty-nine. So this is a long standing tradition, and I think it's onerous. I think it's too restrictive. And we are proposing to drop that down to two and a half acres. So that's this green dot you see in front of you. Currently, we require five acres if there's a wetland. We're dropping it down to two and a half. That is a less restrictive standard. The other thing with meet and bounds, we currently don't have a maximum. How many meet and bounds subdivisions you can do? The new order or the proposed ordinance is proposing that you have a maximum of one meet and bounds subdivision in a three-year period. The reason for this, a lot of counties are starting to do this because you don't want to have five meet and bounds parcels created today. And then the next year, another five parcels, the year after that, another five parcels, pretty much fifteen or twenty, almost, to the public, I don't know anybody. So the whole path would be for the county sort of cabinet at one meet and bounds subdivision in a three-year period. And I will acknowledge that this is a standard that is more strict than our current standard. Public hearings. Currently, we require public hearing for preliminary class. All class require a public hearing. State law, Minnesota Statute five oh five allows a county to do what's called a minor plat. That is a plat that is approved administratively. Planning Commission doesn't have to approve it. The county board doesn't have to approve it. I can administratively approve these small minor plats, and as long as certain conditions are met. And those conditions are a maximum of five lots. All lots created must be in contact with an existing dedicated railway. There's no noise requirement. There's no public hearing requirement. And then with major class, those are the larger part that don't need this requirement, there will be no changes to that. So we're adding a provision that would allow minor plats to be administratively approved. And here's that green dot. This is a provision that is less strict than our norm, than our current ordinance. And just to highlight this round, since I locked in the door in twenty eighteen, we had sixty-three preliminary plats. Twenty-eight of them could have been processed as a minor plat. That means forty-four percent of those preliminary classes that we've seen since twenty eighteen did not have to have a public hearing. Did not have to go in front of planning commission. And we could have streamlined the process and made it easier for the developer to notice. So I think this is a good. Little meet and bounds subdivisions. Minnesota Rules, Chapter seventy-eighty-two, these are the rules that govern septic systems in the state of Minnesota. This is the state code that governs counties and what has to be in the county ordinance in relations, relationship to septic system. It requires that every county ordinance has a provision that requires all lots created after January twenty-third, nineteen ninety-six have a minimum of two solar feeding and dispersal areas that support systems as described in, I'm not going to bore your citations, a type one system or final treatment in seventy-eighty-one. Our ordinance, Section eight, of the sanitation code, which is the common ordinance that regulates septic systems, we do need this requirement. We require that for all new subdivision, we'll have to do the testing, and the soil observations must be conducted to ensure that enough area exists for a primary and secondary soil, community area for a technical system. This tested area must be a minimum of five thousand square feet. So this ensures that you have an area for grain field, and if anything should ever happen to that system, you have a reserve area so you can have a backup area. This is required in the state septic code. This is not new. This has been a statewide requirement since January of nineteen ninety-six. Currently, meet and bounds subdivisions said that you have to have suitable area for the installation of two standard onsite sewage treatment systems. There's also no acreage maximum for this requirement. So if you have a forty-acre tract, you're splitting into the two twenties using a meet and bounds division, we require you to get a septic designer out there, show us that on that twenty-acre tract, there's something area for the septic system. That has seemed a little onerous, so we decided to be a little more reasonable with this. So the proposal brings talks about this. And again, subpart A, paragraph four, Section four, does talk about soil testing, demonstrating that each new lot has suitable soil to accommodate long-term sewage treatment system as described in sanitation code. But then we have some exceptions. Any parcel that is part of a meet and bounds subdivision that has five acres or less, soil testing must be conducted by a licensed septic designer to be this requirement. So five acres or less, someone going out there with an auger and actually looking at the soil. Once you're over five acres, that same licensed septic designer doesn't actually have to go onsite, but they can use the county soil survey from the Natural Resource Conservation Service. They have a website now, it's web-based, so you can zoom out of the property, get a lot of really detailed information on the soils of that property. They can use that instead of actually going onsite and listing it all. And the reason we decided on five acres is because the soil survey that we look at is only accurate above five acres. Once you get below five acres, the soil survey isn't that useful anymore, and you're actually going to have to get somebody onsite and look at the soil. So that's why we chose five acres as that. So currently, we require soil testing for all meet and bounds parcels. Now we're being a little more reasonable in requiring it on those lesser tracks, so this is being less restrictive than the current ordinance. We are going to be creating a development review team. Currently, our ordinance doesn't have a development review team. There is one person that reviews these plats, and it's me, the person who's speaking. And what we decided to do is like what Douglas County does, is we created this development review team, which is going to consist of me, the county attorney, the county auditor, county engineer, county recorder, county surveyor, accountant official in the township that the subdivision is being proposed, and two planning commission representatives. They are going to review both minor and major plats. And they're going to provide a report for major plats to the planning mission. This is new, but this is an internal thing, so I don't view this as more less restrictive. This is just going to be some work for a team inside. So I'm calling this as a neutral change. It's not, it's not arbitrary. It's not arbitrary. It's a new teamwork strategy to review these plats. As a result, because we have more people involved, we do have to back up the time that a class are applied for. We currently require a major plat or preliminary plat that could be applied for five weeks before the date of the planning commission. Because of this new development review team, we backed it up to six weeks. The other advantage that that has is because we're including townships in that conversation, and in townships, it may be monthly, it gives them an opportunity to meet about that plat, form an opinion on it, and then when they come to that development review team, that township representative is a voice for the township, not just his own opinion. So we thought it was prudent for it to back up and have that deadline just one week earlier to give everybody a little more time to review those plats. So again, the green dot represents where we are today, but right now it's five weeks. We're moving it to six weeks, so that is a little more strict. Currently, we provide, we require preliminary title opinion, and we require a final title opinion. We're taking away the requirement for a final title opinion because we don't get that many as we should. So we decided, well, since we're not getting them, let's just get rid of that requirement. Really, the title thing we're looking for is that preliminary title opinions. We're getting rid of a time that we need title. So here, currently, we require a final title opinion. We're getting rid of that, so that is a restrict, it's less restrictive than our current ordinance. We are going to require more applications. Currently, the only application that we require is for a preliminary plat or a major plat. We are going to require them for meet and bounds subdivision. The reason why we, this was the recommendation of the county recorder for the improvement project in twenty twenty, because what was happening was people would go to their counter and say, hey, here's a survey of a lot split. I talked to Amy at Land and Resource, and she says, okay. Well, maybe they did talk to Amy, maybe they didn't. You know, so we need, they asked us to formalize that process with an application. And actually, so now when they walked up to that survey, they're going to have a letter from that resource saying, please review your, your subdivision. Maybe the ordinance, please take this somewhere. So now there's something more, there's a formal approval process. And then both, okay, well, the plats, minor and major, both can require applications, and then the final plat is going to require a, an application. We get a lot of final paths dropped off to our front counter, and it takes us a while to review them. And now we're adding, you know, the county engineers' involvement in that review, so we need a little more time to review those plats before we bring them to the county board. So by requiring that application, it buys us a little more time to do a more thorough, thorough, proper review of that final plat and make sure it's good before you take it to county board for signature. So here, applications required. Right now, we only require one. We're adding a few that is a requirement that is more restrictive. And again, remember, this ordinance is exempt from anything over ten acres. So comparing a thirteen-acre tract to the orders, you don't need, there's no application required. Road inspection. Currently, a road is created as part of a plat, pile and inspect it. And we're not road inspection. So we've asked the county engineers to get more involved in the process. She has graciously taken on that task. And we are now requiring a county engineer, somebody who's qualified, looks at that road. We had a few subdivisions in the past that the road was not installed currently, and it's created some problems. And it's our belief that if a qualified engineer looks at that road, we're going to prevent problems, and that's better for the public. So road inspection currently, that's not an ordinance that county engineer does. It now is. That is a requirement that is more strict. Financial assurance. Currently, improvements must be completed prior to final plat approval. So when they bring in that final plat, the road needs to be done, and Kyle or I go out and inspect it, the conductors to get it forward to county board. Now they have an option to, if the road isn't done, they can still bring in a final plat and create a developer's agreement that the county board brings into a developer. And part of that agreement is that it's going to, that the improvements, which in most cases, it's going to be a new public road, get completed more than two years following the day of the final plat approval, and along with that is financial assurance. So you need some financial affairs provided to the county as part of the developer's agreement. It needs to be a hundred and twenty-five percent of the estimated cost of inflation or point improvements. Again, most likely a road. And it can be in the form of either cash, et cetera, or performance bonus. This ensures that the developer actually pays all the public improvements, and the development gets done in a timely fashion. So this is the new requirement that is more restrictive. Township road construction. If a township road is created as part of a major plat, the township must agree to maintain the road, or the developer must create an entity that assumes maintenance. An example would be a homeowners association. Too often, we approve these plats with the hope that the township is going to take over maintenance of the road. Sometimes they do, sometimes they don't, and they don't. We have a road out there that's not being properly maintained, and it becomes a public safety issue. So this is, and has been put in the ordinance to make sure that somebody is maintaining the road. And it's up to the developer or the township to see if the township will take over. If not, the developer must create a homeowners association where people have, you know, annual dues that goes to some account that paid for that maintenance. Should the road is safe and passable for reverse to vehicles and general traffic. So this is a new requirement. It's more restrictive than the current ordinance. Bottom line adjustments. Our ordinance is really silent and obvious matter. Right now, the county auditor and I, we met in, it was twenty nineteen or twenty twenty, because we, we need to make people a little more of adjustments, you know, which costs them five hundred dollars, an evening of their time. A public hearing was just a stressful situation for the public, and they were all getting approved. So county auditor and I sat down, so let's figure out how we can do this and not be so onerous to the public. And what we agreed to is, as long as the boundary line adjustment is not creating a subsanitary lot or making a subsanary lot more subsanary, we had an agreement that we would let that go. And that's the practice we've been operating under for about three, four years now. Well, now we're codifying it, actually putting a lot of these things into the ordinance. For example, boundary line adjustment for the ordinance, as long as the subsanary lot has been created, as long as the subsanary lot is not made more subsanary, to correct the encroachment, eliminate or reduce setback issues on the main boundary line disputes, and this is an important one. Does increase land use intensity. What we mean by that is, we currently have an old resort that have a lot of land, and they want to split off a big chunk of it, and we got to make sure that the resort that's left behind doesn't suddenly get over their density as described with the shoreline ordinance. So that's what we mean by not increasing the land use and density. So this I view as less restrictive because we were generous with boundary line adjustments that we have in mind. So this is our current ordinance, and our new ordinance looks like this. So here's a quick summary. We have six of items that I highlighted. Six of them are less restrictive than the current ordinance. Six of them are more restrictive than the current ordinance, and then two is just a neutral change. So that's what I have for my presentation, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Leclaire. We will move to the public comment opportunity for this evening, and we do have a whole room. I'm going to review the guidelines that will need to follow here tonight. So if you wish to speak, I ask that you come forward. There is one mic that is already operating on. And we ask that you direct your comments to the county board. Identify yourself, and you will not have an opportunity to yield time to someone else. You'll have a three-minute maximum. And we can have the number, that might even be different, but that is our policy. Again, it will not be an opportunity for the county board to respond to questions. This is a dialogue opportunity. It is an opportunity for the county board to receive comments from the public. And if at the end, Mr. Leclaire identifies a need where he may be able to address any issue that is raised, I will pay him for that. But that is not the intent of public comment. It will be an opportunity for the public to walk their comments. So with that, again, come forward, identify yourself, and speak to the county board. And I will look forward first who may want to interact with the board.
But, yeah.
Want to go there?
Yes. The mic is up here in order to be further added. Yes, there's a, I believe that's the first one. Is that the reason why I can use it on?
I have a few concerns, so I don't know. In my three minutes, do you want me just to read them off of my concerns? Or do you want me to go by subdivisions that you have in your ordinances? What would you like?
You you couldn't answer the question.
In five, in three minutes. Um county inspects the roads. You were just going through that. Um the township, if you if you're doing a plat, the township usually decides if the road is acceptable to take over by the township because the township normally takes over a plat. So why are you getting a county inspector involved, which I am assuming is gonna cost more money? You talked about the boundary line adjustment. Are you talking about if somebody wants a fence line moved or whatever? Is that what your boundary line adjustment is referring to? If it is, what is the boundary line adjustment?
I didn't, I don't know how to read your three minutes, but I'll explain later.
Final title opinion on a plat. Probably nobody that's done a plat up here probably doesn't even know that there was a final title opinion. That's usually the law office that does that. So you classify that as a less restrictive? That is kind of a joke. What are all the application fees gonna cost? You're talking about every single thing having an application fee? What are you charging for these application fees? You're having all these people come to these meetings. Who's gonna pay for all these costs? And who gets the cost? Who gets to pay the the application fee? Not the landowner. You want everything to be for store, for uh um sewer. Everything has to be tested for sewer. What about story sheds? They don't need sewer. Barages, gardens, sheds. You just don't wanna neighbor? Why are you saying ten acres or less, you can't, you have to do soil testing? Why is that gonna be required? I mean, I'm sorry, but that is absolutely asinine that in ten acres, you have to have sewer. Even if you are never ever gonna have a residence on there. Right now, you have two and a half acres if it's not by wetlands or shoreline. And five acres if it is. Are you saying that two and a half acres is going to be the max that anybody has to have now? Whether it's wetland or not? That's not what it's gonna be. So how can that be a less restrictive that you had on there? When right now, two and a half acres, a person can do. Other thing that I wanna state out is you have farmland if it's going to be beneficial for farmland. I don't see too many people up here that farm. So who's gonna do that? Who's going to determine that?
Thank you. Uh here are the three minute points. We have gender people here.
I do have one more thing that I wanna talk about that I think everybody wants to hear. A conflict of interest. On a township board, conflict of interest on Bodie, when somebody owns a sewer system, that can be charged. We're ready to step down.
Thank you. Is there someone else that wishes to speak?
He's exempted. It's a sponsor, Wayne. Uh Paul, when you said, party on township. Going to number seven, page twenty-nine. It has acknowledgement by township board. I think our township should be more honored by that, by must be approved by township board. I don't see this um acknowledgement as the right thing, but approval by township board. Cause our township, the uh county has approved that. And I still believe that the township should have the right to opt out of some of these things. Thank you.
Marcia Holson, Edmonton Township, Oregon, Minnesota. First answered most of the questions I have, but there are numerous references to fees that are listed in the county fee schedule. Where you have to find them in twenty-six pages of the fees. Then page fourteen F two says, the proposed subdivision will be sufficiently compatible with the area surrounding the subdivision. That seems purposefully vague. So it will be open to interpretation and change depending on the person that it applies to or depending on the day of the week or what. Then my third and last point is page fourteen F five says, their proposed subdivision preser- preserves the site's important natural, cultural, or historic feature. Who gets to decide what is important? Someone can interpret it differently from one day to the next or from one developer to the next. Those things are, in my opinion, too vague.
My name is Mike Mannhorn, from the White Township. Um this is the finding draft to be ordered on. There's a lot of dispelings in it, which is kind of scary. There's a lot of dispelings. If this is the final draft, can be ordered on? Well, this is it. I mean, this is, it hasn't been as long as I thought from pity, from meeting a food anyway. Offer sale or development in page six, sub paragraph seventy-six. I don't think it's referring to mining, but it's all R E. But there's multiple dispelings that says there's another dispelling. But, you know, words have meanings. And if you turn to page nine, paragraph B, transfer or sale of land. No owner or agent of yours shall transfer or sell any part of a lot or parcel of land. Now, you mean part of a lot or part of a parcel? The way it's worded, any parcel of land would have, you'd have control over any any land, any sale of a parcel. So if it's a grammatical error, um it needs to be rewritten. If it's not, that's a real problem. Then you can't go to a realtor and sell the land without having, you all know. Now, it becomes almost apparent to me is the amount of authority given to the administrative officer, administrative officer of Mr. Leclaire. That subdivision pre-application meeting used to be optional, now it's required in section four. That reminds me of Senator Harry Reese. Somehow, Harry Reese's family seemed to own parcels of land shortly prior to a highway passing through the area. They weren't ranchers. On top of having early information of property development, Lieutenant Vincent Leclaire had an approval from the planning commission by not submitting objections to the development identified by the newly created develop under routine. So Mr. Leclaire would be a pretty good friend I have with him for. Now, over the over ten acre exemption has subjective stipulations in section three five B. So what one of the essential factors that we have is this soil testing requirement to stop the installation of any subdivision, including fields or a lot purchased as an announcement or on demand. Uh the previous law was six thousand five hundred thirty words. This new law is sixteen thousand nine hundred forty-two words. It's nearly triple in size. And I did some random text searches on sentences in this law, and I found them in ordinances primarily on the east coast. This did not appear to be an organic document. But as Mr. Leclaire said, he copied the Douglas County version, so I immediately knew that.
Did you? Is there anyone else? Wouldn't you do the best?
I don't know. Um so I don't want to be people behind when you shoot a little brush at me. But I heard this was incredibly horrific. And I actually don't know that it is, that it changes. Um I think it is more about the authority um and the control that landowners want to keep. When you see where some of these are are good, um have to do with, and um but there's a lot of variables in there, like the fees. And like if you're gifting to your shoulder versus transferring versus selling, that's a couple of different things. Um and I can see the septic in the water because we're only getting more developed. Um don't know if Douglas County is a good comparison. Don't know if they're gonna grant it because the farmland is some and the Douglas County is pretty, pretty growing um uh more. Um and maybe it needs to be some more clarification, some more revision. Um my concern is I'm wondering, you have to roll soil. You're not prohibiting people from planting trees in their house. You're not prohibiting them from having a grid by trap. It's it's basically septic and 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 lots of eyes, which if you add it, you have smaller lots anyway. Is that my understanding?
Yes, that is right. That's right.
Yeah. So, you know, just to to, because of a lot of people here are very concerned and what's sort of dinner that we don't agree. I tried to compare it against the old one and it was difficult. I mean, we don't do this every day. Or maybe maybe over the title, it is almost us. But you know, um those types of things is not a daily thing. We have to be able to trust. And I don't feel that we're truly trusting the intended. But I don't know that oh, that's a big thing. It's all that.
Thank you. And that's why we have a public opportunity for comment. Uh this is a a new draft of the ordinance.
Hello, my name's Chad Anderson. Um for the most part, um I thought it was pretty good except for I just wanted to talk about E road standards. Just after having dealt with the whole of it and it's resolved. Um and I think uh I'd sort of be too foot with uh asphalt land when you start talking about this eventual, it is string and the that's like a superhighway. I just felt all roads and developments there twenty-six foot wide with twenty-two foot asphalt comps. And there, I mean, I had a good first end to it. So I don't really agree with it.
You say four with twenty-two?
I'm writing down twenty-six.
Twenty-two.
You got two foot shoulders.
Okay, thank you. That's, I was making sure I had my numbers.
And uh like, county and county already have, those are in the two thing place. So a lot of towns maybe already have that information. Maybe consider that.
Right? Yeah. Anybody, any, what else would you speak?
It's Lori Lynn, Curtis Lauter. There was quite a few things that really concerned me, but some of the other people have already um addressed those. The road is a superhighway going through. That's, that's absolutely ridiculous. The um you're doing some things that are counterintuitive to what you propose as a county. This big build program you have. And you wanna do, no, be quiet. Yeah, you wanna do five thousand homes. And yet then we're gonna limit this to only doing five lots in a in a three year period? That's ridiculous. But if I have to, I don't want if you weren't the five lots. I shouldn't be able to do that. There's people on the commission here that have made money on this big build program. And all of you should be, you know, where are your morals? Where are your morals? You need to go back and review this. And I do some further documents.
Thank you. Good evening. Good evening. Thank you.
You have to listen to a lot of things and
Can you get your name, sir?
Yes.
Can we get your name?
Oh, I'm sorry. Michael Sims, St. Louis Township. And we're talking about this progress. Got new one of the things that I do. I was going for this personal land and that is eventual. But I believe the county board is trying to emphasize here is uh uh protect the public from any imminent health threats. I'm looking at the septic in the seventy eighty. Oh, there's a holding gate allowed. It isn't hold. So does that fit? Or can they do the soil test and test out and if we're holding gate?
If anyone, we probably, we can clarify here. I'm just sorry.
And and I think that if if people, I used to be through time and all that stuff, but there there are avenues for all those things. And that's what's the, is the here, that people don't understand. There are ways to interpret situations to address all that stuff. And it it seems restrictive, but it's for effect of the imminent public health threat, the safety of our roads. And and to keep the public safe is the intent, I believe that. So, thank you.
For letting me come up and speak, just want to say that
And you can add, Anderson.
Yeah, I'm at Articl City. You know, this thing has worked well for twelve years. And I I hope that the county commissioners really take that into consideration. I respect a lot of the people up here. I worked with Chris Leclaire. I've honed to be fair on things. I I really think that because it has, it's worked so well for this long, I would hope that you would hear more on the less restrictive side. And, you know, just really talk over some of these things because it does affect costs. And inflation is so high. And there's so many things going on like that, that I think you guys could really help us if you would try to consider those things. And I just uh I just really liked the process. And I thought it was a well, well prepared. We had a pretty good indoctrination there really quickly, which is good because we have a lot of people on the continent. And again, I just, I would just hope that this thing's worked for so long that you'd be real careful with what you do on more restrictive issue before. And you, yeah, thank you guys.
Thanks.
I'm David O here from Game Curry. Hi, my concern is, you know, I'm an old handout. I live in Minnesota all my life. And the thing that really bothers me is to see how restrictive our land has gotten in a long, throughout the decades. And where is it gonna be for our grandchildren? I mean, I plan on leaving my grandchildren somewhere. I got to the land all these. I plan on leaving my chunk of land and according to the list now, I'm already qualified. You know, what do I do? I can change the wheel over again, so plans on those. I have too many grandchildren for the acres I have. And I just love to be all the same, but they wouldn't be able to do that. And I just, you know, the assertion that I think for all kids longer. And I just have to think of that. Where where are all these lives gonna be on our grandchildren? And where is it set up? Many of them, it's prone to get a fall. That's all I'm saying. I think I respect the work that you guys do and have to do. And you're like, this is gonna be spread out here. And you're like, this is going to be spread back here. You know, we want to stand up for what's freedom makes. All I can say.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hey, Colin, Ferguson. Um, I listened to all this. I understand really well with it. But there is always a big picture out there. And for the past four years, I have introduced information to people on this commission. And it deals with things that have to do with you and agenda twenty thirty. People have ignored the whole thing. And I tell people who recognize there is something out there across the world that is messing with people, water, land, and all of their rights.
Yeah.
They are going to miss this whole picture. And it's going to come down to little pitty things here. And it's going to be arguing back and forth, but there's a big picture out there. And there are global forces that are going to mess with you. And there are seventeen sustainability goals. And you can look it up on the internet. You can see that it has to do with everything from education. It has to do with the environment. It has to do with health. It has to do with the L G B, whatever picture is everywhere. And it's coming in and it's just a piece of it. So I'm telling people to take a look at what's really going to do messing with your buffers, messing with your land, your water, everything. And I tell our commissioners, get educated on this. Then what we're doing here is, it's going to be, it's just a rough road to hold and not going to get anywhere. So we're looking at it in terms of what comes down, right now from, um, right here in Minnesota and coming from the state. And they're pushing the Minnesota Equity Blueprint. We're looking at things that have to do with the just everything that has to do coming in here with the green steps and all these pieces. I would advise people to get educated until we do. We're going to, this is what we said. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Do you have anyone else who wishes to speak? I'm from the, the back of the room.
My name is Beth Rolls. I live in, currently in Hanning, Minnesota. This is a great interest for me because we're starting to do some development work out there. And you can see that I think it was my father's work from nineteen sixty nine over this stuff he built. Uh, so the North Shore, a little bit of a late, um, years ago, the East Shore. He pushed to make sure that they couldn't just, uh, use ointments and the twigs legs years ago. He was very proud of the work with you guys. You have a hard job. I was a little bit worried about costs. Now that I'm worried about it anymore, looks like you have some of that. And I think I really appreciate your, um, information that you gave us. Thank you for that. Um, I do suggest for the sake of people who have to be over all this stuff, maybe a flow chart or two would really be helpful. I think pages and pages of, um, terms that you have during the beginning. I understand why you have to have that and get that. But anything that could give a list of the different, um, um, copies that you have to make and where you presented them, some kind of a a chart that you could include at the front, back, or whatever along the way, just to make that process easier for people who are going to develop and, and do some work along that line. I understand what you're trying to do and, and I really do appreciate the information you gave us tonight. Thank you.
Do you have anyone else who wishes to speak?
I do. I have a review on, from, by like county. The lady that I spoke about in twenty thirty, does anybody ever know what that is? Yeah. Do you know what that is? Yes, yes. One of the things that they want by twenty thirty is no personal property. That's right. Right, yeah. And if you don't understand it, I got it right here. Is that where we're going with this crap? Yep, yep, yeah. See? And who gets to decide? You guys? Why did it come down to just a few people screwing with our lives? We had enough with the ditch projects, the lack of money that costs us.
That's where it is.
When they shove that down our throats. We went to the meetings, we had enough saying it. I just love it. This is, it's what's twenty thirty? Oh, we're not going to comment on anything. Wow. And then, what a joke. You guys just yeah, thank you. Man.
Do you have anyone else who wishes to share? Anything?
Sleeping sheeple.
Hi, my name is Trisha Hammond. I'm from Brunch. It's most Minnesota's ranges with on lake, five snow, a river are all pieces of property. Many people will follow their dream after they retire, and multiple like this, a lot of people are at church. And their sixes and have ten or twenty year make it all to go on a lake. Put their life savings into it, this lot, lake, cabin, rural area. For country property. Because of the law changes and rising costs, many people will not be able to handle that. Piece of property or cabin or because of that's countryside. I took county has a lot of lakes. We're still rural and compared to the counties and the cities, the metro area. Everything costs more in the cities and more money is needed to maintain the luminaries and suburbs. I guess my husband and, and myself are suggestions go slower and compromise in some of these issues. Um, that would increase um, tax, taxes for our citizens. Um, and, and the pervert processing, all of this kind of thing. We know you're looking for new and additional revenue sources. Those are all counties. And you want to do that for the, the general good of the people. I did that. But the public, your constituents and obviously the county would appreciate working with you, going slower, having a little more input and achieving a compromise on some of these important and controversial issues. Thank you.
Right.
Thank you. There anyone else? Hmm. Anyone else? I will go on whether it's started into their.
No, I'm with her.
Whether it's, it's all last week. That's just her phone. I want to make sure everyone has weather issues. Focus on this. I, I'll ask one more time if there's anyone else who wishes to, um, speak out of the board here tonight on subdivision control ordinance. If not, again, I want to thank everyone for coming here tonight. Um, through the whole summer evening, you could have been elsewhere. You could have been watching a hockey game. So thank you. Thank you for being tonight. I appreciate the commitment, appreciate the input. And that's been what we're looking for for the decision. So, thank you very much.
Where is this? We'll answer. We're not giving it to you after your question.
I absolutely forgot. I'm going to turn to Minnesota Claire and respond. Is that that earlier? And I want.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. A, a couple of items. The, the transfer of, transfer of sale of land in paragraph and I believe it's section three. That's just like we agree our sector ordinance, so you can't do sector work unless you meet this ordinance. It's kind of a similar statement. Um, that's just kind of a generic statement. You know, and I think back to, it happened twice in my, uh, time here where we had a substandard continuous loss with same ownership. Which state law, it takes that, uh, people can't, if you have two substantial lots together, um, state law doesn't allow you to sell one of the lots to your neighbors or, or anybody else. And we had a couple of them that had lived through cracks in money that's exchanged hands. And then Michelle and I had to get involved and undo that and was very painful for everybody involved. So it's trying to prevent, uh, those things from happening. A couple of other, um, items, the road standards, uh, the township road standards have not changed at all. Uh, there's a, in, in appendix three, our current ordinance are the township road standards and we have not touched these. They're the same as they've been for the last twenty seven years. And then regarding, uh, whether a holding tank could be allowed in lieu of the soil treatment area, the state law does not allow that, uh, to create a lot. You do have to show that you have enough area for uh, soil treatment and not this whole thing. So in order for a person or a lot to be approved, they have to demonstrate, um, that there's no service for that. Those are the concepts.
Thank you. Thank you. And thank you for being at my attention. Again, thank you for being here tonight and glad to be here.
It's the best. Don't you feel this message being happening, people don't get against our, bringing against.